We need two more councilmen.
There's one more out there.
Is he out there? Mr. Diaz is out there.
And Diaz is out there. But for the study session...
On a study session, we don't do...
We don't need a quorum for the study session.
We don't need a quorum, yeah.
I think so.
No? Study session?
No, I think we're fine. We've just started.
Okay. Well, there's a...
If a quorum does show up, though, please call a meeting to order. If a quorum does show up...
It's at 4:30? Yeah?
All right. Okay. Good.
We'll start with that.
Yeah.
With just a call to order? And... I don't know why I just... Just see... Yeah, let's take a look, see if everybody's here or something.
Joe will be right here.
Joe's there? Call to order the study session of mayor and city council meeting at 4:30, uh, 5:00 PM. This Wednesday, December 12, 2018, here at City Hall Complex Council Chambers. Will you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Councilman Newbar, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. And we'll just go right ahead into the presentation you have for us today.
Well, there's Mr. Diaz.
Okay.
How are you doing?
Good.
Good to see you. If I stand here and everyone can see me, is that...
Yes. Looks pretty well. I don't know about your corner here. Unless you guys want to move this way, or you want to tilt the... Tilt the side?
That's just a... Mayor and council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, we thank you for the opportunity to meet with you. When I called and spoke to Dr. Felix about the opportunity to talk about our project and economic development for the county, he said, "Welcome, but please direct your attention to how it can affect and benefit the city of Nogales." So while I'm here, and I brought many people from the Tubac area who are not fully supportive of the project yet, that we will key to what this could mean for the city of Nogales. I will speak to the project itself, and then Ursula is going to address directly our thinking as it relates to economic development in the city of Nogales. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Formerly, I am Emmett McLaughlin. My wife Ursula McLaughlin and I are long-term Arizonans. She arrived in Arizona in the late '60s by the way of Germany and Canada. I arrived in Fort Wachukka in 1964 by way of Boston College. So we're here, we fell in love with the area, and eventually fell in love with ourselves. That developed. And since the '70s, I have a history of being involved in real estate, real estate development, and sales. I'm still a licensed attorney and real estate broker after 43 years, so... Looking at you, I want to say to relate to Nogales that my first job after leaving Fort Wachukka was selling soap for Procter &amp; Gamble. And what really struck me as interesting is I was coming to Nogales and meeting with Mike Masson and the Brackers and the Pooches, and we were selling carloads of that soap into Mexico. So that's where I started to develop an interest in Nogales and what's happened. And in Tucson, where I lived until the early '90s, I was active in politics as a member of the Tucson City Council from 1971 to '75. Dr. Felix was on the board supervisor of the Pima County at that time. And then at the latter part of the '70s, I served two years in the Arizona Legislature, the 33rd Legislature, at which time I was called to the family business, which was making accessories for printing presses in Ireland, in Germany, and we had a licensee in Japan. So for most of the '80s, I spent most of my time with the family business, learning German and studying Russian. And then we went off to, at the request of Mayor Volgy, Thomas Volgy, in the late '80s, when they were looking for a Republican to serve on the Sister City Committee that wanted to have a sister city in the Soviet Union, I got involved. I'm the Republican, I volunteered to do it. And by this time, Ursula McLaughlin had joined my real estate office and had taken my place at several meetings. I was being in Germany or I'd be in Japan. She took hold of the Sister City Committee between Tucson, Arizona, and Amma Ata Kazakhstan. She has a history of working with hotels, with motels in the Tucson area. Had been recognized a couple of times by the courts of Pima County to run hotels that were in bankruptcy type of... So we were invited to find a sister city in the Soviet Union. By this time, my Russian language skills were getting better, and we found ourselves in Amma Ata Kazakhstan. And this is just as the country... We were still with the Communist Party, but as Ursula discovered, the business manager of the Communist Party of Kazakhstan, who happened to be an ethnic German, a vulgar German, and she was able to talk with him, this way said, "Well, you know, the Communist Party members are no longer paying their dues, and I don't know how I'm going to pay the electricity for this hotel that we were administering for the hotel next month." And so she was able to talk to him. My first deal in Kazakhstan was with the Communist Party of Kazakhstan. That was our introduction to the country. And based upon experience in Amma Ata, then the city of the capital moved to Astana, Kazakhstan. We followed it there, and then we're actually out in the oil patch of Atyral building a hotel. This was essentially Ursula's responsibility. And then we went back to the east of Germany. I had been working in the '80s in the west of Germany, out of the Frankfurt area. But we liked to look at the opportunities when the walls came down and found ourselves in Dresden area, looking into Poland and the Czech Republic and things of that nature. And I am a generalist in business with financing and sales questions. Ursula is a specialist in hotels and in conference centers, is what happened. So that we kept up until two years ago, when trying to put together a major factor in Astana, it did not happen. We had a fellow come in from London and made a proposal to the mayor and the council, "I'm good for $100 million to do this property." But when we met with the bank that theoretically owned the property, we were told, "Well, why don't you send $5 million to the bank president's account in China?" And with that, we kind of just passed and said, "Well, let's go back to Arizona." I have to tell you, the jet lag has been murdered for 35 years. And living as we have in Sonoyta, we said, "Well, let's look at opportunities in southern Arizona." I had a bad dealing in Pima County 20 years ago. Said, "I'm never going back to work in Pima County." So starting two years ago, we were over at Dos Cabezas. And we were looking along I-10 and looking at other ranches there. And then even in our own neighborhood of Sonoyta, we looked at Grafton Gellin's property as a possibility. And more and more, we realized that being along I-19 was important. There's the proximity to the Tucson Airport, Tucson, to the Phoenix Airport, and also to the Santa Cruz County Airport. So we narrowed our interest to two particular properties. One at Toma Cockery. It was difficult to develop, and it was too close to the interstate from a noise point of view. So then we had been introduced to the southernmost property of the Sulperi Ranch that's owned by the Arizona Ranchland Company. And we identified a property that we thought was remote. It was out of the way. It was something that would be attractive for us. And we were looking to develop a conference center that would attract the same type of clientele to southern Arizona that we were working with in Germany and in Kazakhstan. And we've been at Georgia and Poland and other countries. And so this section of land that had been, actually been planned for 66 first-class hotel... 66 first-class residences 10, 12 years ago, was available. The engineering had been done. And we started to investigate the possibility of using that. Ursula is a hands-on planner and found that we could use this property, we thought, properly. I would point out, because we're going to come back, and as Frank said, "How does this benefit the city of Nogales?", you know, the whole thing. We would welcome meetings, other groups coming from Nogales or using the property. And we'll show you the site plan that we have of the property for people to come there. Right now, the fence and the concertina wire and all of the under the fences and over the fences is miserable to try to attract people to come to Santa Cruz County. I don't have to tell you that. Whereas, we're talking about going from $60 to $70 million investment, where we have the financing, to develop this square mile of land. There's 640 acres in a square mile. We actually would use but 140 of it for our purposes. So being the good brokers that we are, and the advice is that when we get started, well, what you want to do is send a letter to the neighbors that you're interested and invite them to talk. And in fact, we did send it out. What stressed me a little is that of the 17 houses in the Sarampa Lone subdivision, but six of them had addresses in Tubac. So then we go off to a meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And at that meeting, the chairman of the subdivision comes in and says, "Well, I had a fly-in from Michigan for this meeting." And then a little bit later, the attorney for the group came in and said, "Well, I had a fly-in from New Jersey for this meeting." And then it was sometime after that we went to the internet to find out about the owner... the officership of the homeowners association. And we find that of the six officials, not one of them has an Arizona mailing address. So these are people that we find are unhappy with our plans. We had tried to set aside, and I'll show you the site plan, where Ursula has the buildings to access the property. I'm going to show this to you in a minute. We would come into the property that is owned by Arizona Land Corporation and come down here to the site, avoiding the involvement with the local subdivisions. So that was the plan, and is the plan from the very beginning.
Can I ask you, that road or highway is that I-10, or is that actually Ariwaka Road?
That's I-19.
I-19, okay, yeah. I-19, okay. Where would Ariwaka Road be?
Ariwaka Road's up here.
Way up there, okay. So it's south of Amado?
Yes, yes.
South of the checkpoint?
You know, we have looked... Well, here, let me just... I think if we put it... I think we put the whole thing over there.
Yeah, that would...
It would be much easier. Yeah, right about there, I think, everybody...
There we go. Now we're... Now we're getting our bearing.
Yeah. I think everybody else has already seen this. So we're looking at this section of land. We thought it was a no-brainer. We thought it was easy. If you're going to make a $65 million investment in a county that's desperate looking for investments and you're out of the way, you know, why not? But then, at first, we had the Ormers come up to the office for two hours. We had Patterson's Executive Committee talk for two hours. Rosemary's saved Tubac group for two hours. And then it just, as time goes on, the thinking solidified more and more against this. Now, this is the time we're talking with you, and we're not going to ask them to address where you might later. So we would attract worldwide people from the highest echelons of business, Fortune 500, the people that would look to develop activities in Santa Cruz County. We are aware that we're close to Mexico, and that there's a lot of money in Mexico that would be prepared to come here if there was the right type of facility. Today, in Santa Cruz County, the one place where you can see more than 125 people is the main room at the Golf Resort. And that's 130 is what you can do. People in the tourism industry are embarrassed by the fact that we cannot see any more people than that anywhere in the county. And what Ursula has organized and planned and said... And I sense, too, in the opposition to what we're planning to do, what has been written, opposition to having weddings in Kinsaneras at the facility, that we figured we could have more than 300 seats. So what we're suggesting is, the Germans have a word for it. It's called Loch Vogel. It's the bird that attracts other birds. And to do that, you have to have a really nice place. And we would put up a very nice place. We're anticipating that the total price per day, the... what is it, uniform price?
Oh, I see. The all-in-one.
The all-in-one is $800 per person. Two people, it'd be $1,200 and something. So this is a high-end, expensive type of facility that would be built to the highest quality. And that, city of Nogales, city of the county of Santa Cruz, even the city of Nogales Sonora, from my point of view, could use this because we're looking for a high-quality location and facility. And then we don't have to worry about the problems of Morley Avenue and the concertina wire and all of that. So...
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So is this going to have its own, like, hotel or rooms?
No. This is not a hotel.
Okay, so...
It's not available...
So where would people stay?
Ursula, we want to give each of them a copy of the...
Where would people stay if they came?
Well, we will have facility to stay.
For our clients?
But it will not be available for somebody driving by on the highway. It is not a hotel. It is a conference center. It's a lodging facility. Meaning, the lodging facility is for our conference guests. These guests that we are obviously housing. Nobody will be coming for any less than three days. And this is not something unusual. When you go to the internet and you would look at two resort-type facilities, the Canyon Ranch and the other one at Wanda, which has now been overbiked, taken over by Hilton, up in the northwest side. These places do not let anybody come for less than three days. And we feel that is because if people come from far away, flying in, we would successfully pick them up at the airport. They will not be driving their cars. Those that will come in their cars will be, obviously, off the coast of the city. But otherwise, there will be no car traffic in the place either because all vehicles that will come in from the outside will be parked and will be taken to their destination within the facility by a special vehicle that is similar to the vehicles that are now being used by Pima County in the Sabino Canyon. And these solar-powered vehicles, they can seat up to 15 or 16 people. Most people that would be coming would be in smaller groups. We would have our own vehicles pick them up at the airport, depending wherever they fly in. This is all included in their facility price. So if you fly into Phoenix, we will send, and if it's only two big shots, we will send a very nice visiting. But it's happening to be in the Nogales International Airport the same way. If they're larger groups, we will send a larger vehicle. And we would not expect people to have to find their way around in a place that they've not been.
So to finish my comments, this represents a major investment in the county tax base. Very few people seem to think about that anymore, but it's important. And every year, when we talk about tax time, that there is this concern. This would, because of the facility, and let me say, we've looked at a lot of them, and people said, "Well, why can't you go further north or further south?" Frankly, this is a winner. Emmett and Ursula said, "This site, as it is planned, is a winner." And it brings renown to southern Arizona and to Santa Cruz County and to Nogales. So do you have any questions of me before I ask Ursula to address the question of economic development?
Yeah, Emmett, again, just to give... So I can get an idea. Where... There's the state land. Okay, now, where's I-19?
This is I-19 here.
That's I-19?
Yeah.
Okay.
And this is the land that Congressman Rahaba's been working on to make a wilderness. So it's deliberately set aside and unique.
And to get to the entrance to the property would be through that area?
It would be off of the frontage road, the I-19 frontage road.
Now, is that going through a residential area?
No.
No, it's an undeveloped piece of property.
Oh, so it would be a road basically dedicated to get to that property?
Yes. In fact, there's two roads. The one is David Brown's of Noren Homes. Has done a lot of development in the area. And he was virtually ready to make a deal with us to allow one way to get to the property. And then further north of that, there's another road that would go through the Arizona land property. Right now, to look at the property, you work your way through some subdivisions at Sarampa Lone, but that does not figure into the future of the development.
So you would have its own entrance. Just, you said you looked at different properties. Did you ever look at the Rex Ranch? The property of the Rex Ranch?
I looked at the Rex Ranch 40 years ago. The problem with Rex and the Miraval and the... You have these older properties that people try to convert into usable properties. But the reality is nowadays, people are looking for luxury. They're looking for new-built stuff that is the highest quality.
You know, there's the Circle Z, which is basically the opposite of what you're saying, right? Rex Ranch was pretty much, the people that went there wanted to be in the rustic, you know, Arizona desert or somewhere desert.
So is the Circle Z. We go by there at least three times a week.
Exactly.
It is a very large piece of property.
The Circle Z? Yeah, the Circle Z is a huge piece of property.
But it is an old property. And I have nothing against old properties, but the type of development that we are proposing is not going to come to stay in some old outdated apartments. That is not when you're going to see these people alike.
Yeah, and some of the people here have written and claimed that what we're doing is developing a mega resort. Well, as you look at the fact sheet in front of you, we're talking about a modest facility of about 78 rooms. And this is 20 rooms less than what you have at the Golf Resort right now. And Ursula, are you... Do we want to put up the site plan?
Yeah, I think we should put up the site plan.
Newbar, any more?
No, no, I just, the question was on the... You know, even if, like I said, you have some people that basically are not in agreement with this. But I mean, how big is the Rex Ranch property? Is that...
It is much smaller than this.
I'm going to take this moment to welcome our councilman, George Maldonado. Then with his presence here, we form a quorum. And even though we announced a meeting, we have a quorum, but just so everybody will know, it's an official meeting at this point. Thank you, Councilman, for coming on. If anybody in the back would like to take a look at the... You can come up and get closer. We'll even change the scene here in a little bit in case we are interested in looking at the sketch.
Well, it's the very first time received.
Oh, okay.
Well, please, all of a sudden.
It has been turned in.
Just for some clarification. Some of it had been provided in the county's material that we provided. And there was the question, "Well, what we had provided was really rotten up for some of the labels that were on there."
If I may say something?
Yeah.
I think at this point, we have the benefit of the view, but I believe that the audience is having probably a little... Is there any way we could kind of angle it to so that...
Ursula, I'll hold this one.
I need to put it in place.
Oh, there we go. There.
You can hold it. Okay, I'm going to stand over to the side because this is basically the floodplain situation. This was requested from the county.
That's... It's a slippery one.
Go along. So what we have here is a whole square mile of land. I think it sounds very... Oh, so it's a square mile. And I'm asking the question of most of you, have you ever driven along a regular highway and looked at the signage that shows up? This is number 12. And then you drive and drive and drive, and all of a sudden it says, "And this is number 13." Then you will realize how much land we are actually looking at in one direction. From this corner to here, there's over 6,000 people. That's not something that you're going to do while going along on your feet. So please, take the time next time you're on a regular highway, not a mere mistake, and watch that little green sign that has a number on it. Whatever number it says, when it shows up again on the same side of the road, you will see it is either one more or one less number. That means you have a boost. Along a road, one mile. That's what we're talking about here. One mile, one mile, one mile, one mile. It is a square mile. It is not somebody's small home block. In the center of this square mile is a mountain. A lot of people like it. I like it. I would never harm it in any way. Now, people are coming from all... Now, people are coming from all different directions and are actually climbing this mountain. You can go to the internet, and you will find people having put up pictures when they are up on top of the mountain. I tell you, this whole section is private land. And whoever is climbing the mountain is trespassing. If something would happen, and this is not some place where you have a path to go up to the top, this is a mountain. And if something happened to you, or whoever is going to climb up there, you would be, first of all, having trespass. Secondly, there would be no insurance to cover you in any way.
Okay, Ursula.
Yeah. So, but that's basically the development. What we have here, we're coming in open on the top. This is going to be totally above us all to the existing subdivision, which is here, and which ends, by the way, Blacktop here. So that subdivision takes in a little bit less than a quarter mile of the upper section. So we're coming in here. People that come in their own vehicles will be taken here and get vehicles will be parked. There is the administrative offices up here. Because somebody has said, "Well, why do you have offices down here?" But those offices are not what happens here. We do not want anybody to just wander in that has some business that has nothing to do with what is happening down there. Because today, meetings and conferences, the big thing is security. Security of your body, security of all of your information, and all the things you have. This section is going to have twenty-four-hour security. You will not be able to drive up here and come in. You will be asked to have a reservation. If you don't, if you don't appear on the roster, you'll be asked to leave. You will not be permitted. So the other thing is, we don't want any cars wandering around here like I have said earlier about the comment, what will happen to people that are here? And how are they going to get around? They're going to get around how we will transport them either to this area, which is the conference area. Here we have a little situation where there are some of our offices. There's also a first aid station in case something should happen to somebody or an employee. There is going to be some washing machines. And somebody here knows that you can possibly not hear a washing machine that's about three quarters of a mile over here in a building that is much lower because you're going to have thirty-five hundred feet between going up here and going down the other side. So to listen to a washing machine that you can't even in a hotel here when there is a laundry room down the room of where you sleep, you cannot even hear those washing machines. So this is another one of those ideas. This is all conference facilities. Here we have actually the people that are staying. They're just strangers. This is three dates. We're going to keep them. We're going to entertain them. Obviously, we will have a steakhouse and a bar. That will have a license. But you will not come in here and say, "I want to go to your bar," because we will not let you in. And here we have seventy-eight rooms and suites. There, kind of, some here, some here, some here. This is not a huge mega building. Somebody had put out that there were all of these glass windows. Well, I'm a little surprised because I don't even know where all of these windows are going to be because there have been no plans developed. There have been outlines produced in order to be able to come up how much room we're going to build up and how big this is to you to offer this going to be. But there are no windows designed for anything. We have a library. And somebody has made it like a library. Well, I'm sorry. But when we go to Tucson, and here we're coming back to lodge. Lodging. Lodging is a very old word. It comes from the word lodger, which actually originated in England. Some people should know better. A lodger is somebody that lives in a building where other people also are lodging. So a lodge. A lodge is not a hotel. It is not a resort. It is a facility where there are rooms that people can stay, change their clothes, and go to the bathroom. So a library is a place to go to relax, to read the paper, or maybe just sit and think about what it is that you have been doing all day maybe, anywhere, in meetings, thinking about business or other things like counting and multiplication, all of those things that will come to the forefront in meetings.
Ursula, economic development?
I am going to. I'm going to just tell them. There is one more thing over here that is called a restaurant sitting on the highest peak that I can find in the corner, furthest away from everybody on my view. So excuse me, but I will tell you a little bit about what this will be for our county. Our county, not somebody else's county. I have to make notes because so much has been talked about this and so much misinformation has been spread out there that I think I'm going to try just to concentrate on what it will do for our town. Arizona has over forty-six hundred manufacturers. Their products range from precision parts needed to send a robot to Mars to a remote-controlled rescue boat saving lives and to the life-saving artificial heart. But not an awful lot of business manufactured in Santa Cruz County. Let us look what other parts of the state are doing to get some of the business that should be looking at Santa Cruz County. The Phoenix Mesa Gate Airport, where a custom site was Mexico, which convinced Amazon to locate its behemoth of a warehouse in Tucson, employing fifteen hundred people. Then there is the Tucson Ocean Shipping outfit, Haha, the port of Tucson. What is wrong with this picture? Nogales, Arizona, Santa Cruz County. Is this not the border where huge investments have been made to bring produce from Mexico to feed the US in as far away as Canada? Both Mesa, Phoenix, and Tucson are not at the border, or not even very close. Both locations have to further ship forward either by air or by truck to get their goods to Mexico. Texas is trying and succeeding with it to grab a big part of the produce shipping market now for Hidalgo in Laredo, Texas. When it comes to the maquilladora, the needs of parts and equipment, yes, we do get a lot through Nogales. But why do we need to be very careful depending on it? Many foreign manufacturers do experience the problem of getting their parts and equipment to Mexico's Sonora by truck. There is a big problem with getting good and experienced truck drivers. The other side is that not just North American manufacturers are doing business with them in Mexico, but other foreign markets are looking and are beginning to look at the manufacturing of their goods in Mexico, which then can be sold back to the US without the headache of shipping it halfway around the continent or around the world. And sanction taxes probably would not come into being because somehow we get a label on it, "Made in the United States." So what has this to do with our project, the Puma Club, the Saral Palone? This time has come to make other manufacturers of goods produce in the US and Canada aware of a place called Santa Cruz County, Arizona. It is a hell of a lot cheaper to send a truck from Nogales, Arizona to the other side of the border than dragging it across our continent. What is wrong with establishing manufacturing plants in this county? A truck is still a lot cheaper than a plane to ship parts and equipment. But even in Nogales International Airport is able to take away a great deal of business for Mesa. There's actually a company that has started to try to get into that business at your airport. All those in the area, merchants and suppliers are interested in the tourist industry. But it is not possible on a relatively small county's budget to join the world of advertising and marketing in this direction. We and our project represent the future by providing a venue for the international world of business at a very high economic level to meet and to become familiar and being able to explore this beautiful place called Santa Cruz County. A place for local businessmen and business leaders to meet and entertain visiting business executives. The Puma Club is not a mega resort, as some opponents call it. It is a conference center with lodging facilities. It is not a place for groups to meet, to have a good and roaring time. It is a place of business. Here to attract executives are not just in Arizona, but from around the country and the world. No business leader will come to have a conference for a date and leave. That is a ludicrous idea. They come for more dates, several dates. Our business experience and the very business leaders meet is far removed from the ideas and negative descriptions being shipped force by local people. And they have no funding in reality. Give us the opportunity to bring something that can result in the economic development of this county. A sixty-five to seventy million dollar investment is not resulting in something that is seedy, as one person who happens to be here called it in a letter to the local mayor. So you also think about the merchants of Nogales in Toubac and the county and areas not really close to the city of Nogales. Our international experience with the well-to-do business visitor was that we will make room available to display the art and artifacts that are being offered here. We will ensure all goods with lots of London and special departments will be available to advise our guests and possible purchasers. And we will put them in touch with the merchants. We unlock the sellers of goods, but feel that the culture and its products that are a big part of the attractions of this county also other inquiries about real estate or other purchases will be handled through this department. Please remember, our business aims to help the economy of Santa Cruz County. Your success is our success. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ursula, for that presentation and information that you've given us on what's going on out there at the outskirts of Nogales, or I should say, the outskirts of Toubac, I guess. So it doesn't neighbor Toubac at all, then?
No, not really. It is out the twentys.
We like to think we're in a remote area.
Surrounded by state and forest land to the south of us is a very large trust land. The owners of that trust land are not against our development. They are owning about almost two seconds of land to the south and south.
Well, the city of Nogales, I believe, we're always hoping that, you know, we'll have anything that will promote the tax base here and also promote the area.
Yes.
You know, we figure what's good for Santa Cruz County also benefits the city of Nogales. And probably you'll probably be having people from across the border that might want to have some of those mini conventions or whatever.
Absolutely.
Conferences. And in that, for that, you know... But I guess we have nothing to do really with the zoning and whatnot that falls under the Santa Cruz County jurisdiction. I don't know if Dr. Penix has some work to say to maybe enlighten us a little more, and then we can have some questions.
No, I just requested an opportunity to present the concept and have the city understand the premise of the development. And so we offered that opportunity. Really, the county's going to decide on planning the zoning commission or make a recommendation, and the county decides on...
That's basically what I want to know. Is there was any kind of joint thing going on that I wasn't aware of? But I noticed Councilman Levar had his hand up. I don't know, did you want a question to ask?
Yep. Just a couple of questions. I guess this, it's six hundred and forty acres, just one section, right?
Yeah.
I guess it was zoned rural, is that right?
Yes, GR.
It's GR.
It's GR. Okay. And so you're trying to get it rezoned commercial?
No.
No?
No. You can put a lodge, what we're talking about, in a GR zone with the approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission. That's the course that we're on. Most of the county is GR. Most of, Ursula said it's a golf resort, not a GR. We're caught up in semantics. And there are people that don't want anything to happen that are threatening a lawsuit and can stall things. And we're in limbo. And investment, you know, a major investment to the county. But Mr. Mayor, I would tell you, and you know Emmett McLaughlin, we talked about the I-L-Y problem and how we can solve, that once we get our feet in the ground in this project, I would bring a lot of economic development to this county. And you don't have to pay me sixty thousand dollars a year, or a hundred and twenty thousand. It's there because the industry and the business follow business people. And that's who we are and what we want. We can talk business. We've been at a level, I mean, to... We've been at a level with sixty-five million dollars. Yeah, okay. But if you talk to a local bank around here, or even in Tucson, about six and a half million, ten million, whatever, they get all excited. There's a lot of money in the world that's looking for investment. Let me repeat that. There is a lot of money in the world that's looking for investment. And to bring them here, you need a facility like this to impress them that these people know what they're doing. But we also have, we also have to have the team here to go up to the airport, to pick them up, and talk to them about things and get into the right relationship with them. That's a challenge that you, as a city, have, and that's what the county has in attracting your economic development people. We can bring them.
No, just a question. Are there any architectural renditions already out there? Or that would be...
No, just some, I've made some sketches. Because obviously, you've got to, you know... I mean, that's what I do. I have built facilities halfway around the world. And I have worked with architects. I have worked with developers. I have overseen the construction of a major hotel in the oil patch of Kazakhstan, Four Star Hotel, which was able to get up against a Venizam's hotel, which opened up down the street, and it succeeded in the Venizam's.
No. Now, is this, is, just trying to imagine what it would look like. I mean, is this going to...
It is going to be like a... You know what a hacienda is, right? All of you. I hope so. And that's what it is going to look like.
Hacienda style.
But not like hacienda styles like we've seen in some of the subdivisions, the modern hacienda style. I like showing something to our guests that will remind them where we are. You know, we're all sitting here, and some people have said about international investment. Well, only by the grace of God, in the purchase of the United States, of the Gadsden purchase, are we sitting in the United States and not in Mexico. Okay? So international is only twenty kilometers away on this place. It is across the water. I want to... I want to remind people that we are close to that place and that the culture and the way of life that developed here came out of there. Everything else was imported from somewhere else, and that is important to me. So, it's not going to be a glass box that is going to sit.
I mean, is there, is there something, let's just say that us or whoever, whoever's here is interested, I mean, would you say we're going to model it after...
I'm going to show you something, yes.
But I mean, would you, would you say it's modeled after X in California, or it's modeled after...
No, it's not.
There was a little here, there's 350, I think you said there was 300.
Yeah, there's 640 acres. We do...
No, no, but I mean, suppose there's 350 worldwide kind of association of conference centers. Is there any conference center that basically you would say would be modeled after?
No, because they are not in Mexico.
Well, here in Arizona or California, I mean, there's some gorgeous hacienda-type hotels in California, you know, in Texas, and, you know, there's, you know, we could go to Alamos, you know, there's, they've got the hacienda-type deals there, right?
Yeah, yeah. That's, that is my thinking.
Well, that would be the next step you want to do. First of all, we have to get the approval to put issues on this property, and then you get to the development plan and the architectural drawings and what's going to happen. Thankfully, the engineering has been very much done by the people in Arizona land who had planned 66 houses. So, the roads you're in, the survey, the hydrology, all of that stuff. This is, and from the very beginning, what we've been talking about, I don't know if we mentioned 200,000 square feet of roof in that building, but all of those black buildings add up to 200,000, and they would be certainly of one similar architectural style.
And has it been done, there is water, is there? There is, there is water?
Company.
And you would have to put in your own sewer plant, or...
Well, we would put in a sewage package plant.
Let me explain. The owners of this section of land own the section of land number one over here, okay? They have developed a very good well, which they are not going to be using because they are not going to be building those 130 houses that are planted up here because they are not housing developers. That was an idea that came around more than 10 years ago. With the financial crisis, all of that went away. Emmett and myself have had many meetings with them up in Phoenix, and we are actually anticipating of buying that lower half of section one as well to be able to get this done. And we would take out the PAD that has been applied to both this section and that section, and we would not be building 130 houses on relatively small lots. These were large lots of 4 equals and plus. But we would develop it probably into kind of executive-type facilities where people could have a large home, people that have naturally also plenty of money. But the well is sitting up here in relationship. We would bring the water over here, and we would have up here, this little area up here, this is kind of the depressed area. We would have very large storage tank and pressure tank, and then the water would be having to be brought around in order for our development. There's all of this talk about the sewer plant. Well, I have rooms for everybody.
Hold this one. Let me tell you, there is an existing water company owned by Arizona Land Company. We would take that over. So, that answers the question, do you have water sufficiency and how is the water distributed through the two? And that's for at least two sections.
And they have enough water for a 200-year deal or whatever they...
They are all, all of the documentation I have available. I would not go into a project like this unless it was workable. And that was some time, we have been working with these people out of Phoenix since the beginning of the year. And so, it took a long time to get down to everything and look into all of the engineering and everything, and they have been very, very helpful out there. So, the other thing is a matter of the sewage plant. Well, there is no such thing as a sewage plant anymore because ADQ has said, and we heard this convincingly from the gentleman that has the subdivision plant here, the Toubac forty, and he was going and trying to tell the authorities that he was going to build 80 homes, and each of them would have a septic tank, and he was told that was no longer possible, that he would have to install what is called a packaged sewage pipeline, which is nothing like a municipal sewage plant. It is something that is relatively small, is located underground, and even if you walk up to it, you probably would not be able to smell anything. So, that's what has to happen here, and that's what will happen here away behind the mountain just in case somebody really thought they're having a sewage plant. It's not going to be visible indefinitely. No wind would blow over the 3,800 feet of mountain to the other side to land over here in the suburbs. So, that's all I can say to that.
We thank you very much for your time. We got started a little later, but we still got a full hour in. And it's very gracious of you. The purpose of the presentation was to bring you up to date with what we're thinking to introduce ourselves. We live in Sonoma. You see us all the time, and we're here. Please.
Just a little comment, you know, thank you for all of your information and all that. You know, is there certain issues you're having with the county? Is there certain information that you could give us?
We'd be happy to give you a report.
On the border, I've been in the produce business 40 years where we got the high-tech and most efficient border crossing.
I know. Spend a lot of money.
Yep.
Nice crossing.
What Prey said, but...
We don't want to give it to Laredo, Texas.
It's not going to Laredo. It's too much worry, but you gotta have, there'll be a piece of the pie.
It's all going to Laredo.
We want to keep it here.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for the question. I'll thank you soon.
Please, please, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, and again, I guess that was the end of it, so I move, this meeting adjourned, so.
Second.
All those favors and invite, but say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Much, Gary. Dean.